Good evening, and I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken at this table will focus on our students and their achievement. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susie Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jenny Leeper. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to public comment. I have two individuals. Mr. Wykoff, will you please step up to the mic?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I decided to bring my computer so I wouldn't pollute the environment since we're only going to have a world until 2030, according to some bartender in New York. Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road. This is getting easier because I I went back in time and got some old articles. Back in April 2016, open enrollment in the district as of 2015 was 342 students. If we still had Price Lab and Valley Park School, now a daycare center, we wouldn't have an overcrowding issue, but that door is closed. As I've stated before in memos that I sent to both Walt Rogers and Jeff Danielson to change the law and allow open enrollment money be spent on bricks and mortar. So while on this subject, where is that, isn't it $6,000 per student that we're getting paid to enroll in Cedar Falls? Four years later, where is this $2 million at or used for? I don't recall any explanation anywhere on the use of this money in any budget review. Jenny Leeper, again, back in April 2016, said open enrollment is very lucrative at a recent board meeting. 1.5 million in net open enrollment funds. Common sense says we need a safe roof over our kids, new teachers, and allowable expenses, but not to punish Cedar Falls taxpayers for the absurdity of this restriction and no transparency for where it is spent. Complaints against Cedar Falls High School current location include having a cafeteria without windows. This is the perfect location for a collection of students, teachers, to be protected from, but remember, we don't have a print or layout of the $69.9 million school because there isn't one. No legitimate business anywhere would put the cart before the horse, as our Cedar Falls School Board has done on this $69.9 million issue. Then, in January 2017, the most recent enrollment forecast showed the current Cedar Falls High School located at Division Street.
Mr. Wykoff, you've got about three more seconds.
I got three more seconds. Overcapacity by 2019, 2020. That's this year, with the count at 350 or less, maybe.
Mr. Wykoff, thank you.
Okay.
We have three minutes allotted for speakers, so thank you.
Okay.
Greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Linda Bowman.
Hi, everyone. I'm Linda Bowman. I live and work in Cedar Falls, and I'm a mom to three children in the school district. One's in high school, one's in junior high, and one's in elementary school. And he's a second grader, so will be around for a while as parents. I am here to tell you, I think we've created, as a community, we've banded together to create terrific spaces for our elementary and junior high school students to learn, and I wholeheartedly believe it's time that we did that for our high school students as well. I went to my first parent-teacher conferences in the classrooms about six weeks ago, and until that time, I had not been in the high school beyond the auditorium or the gym. And I have to say, I was a little disappointed in what I saw as I tried to navigate the building, first of all, and find all the classrooms. It seemed to me that some parts of that 1954 building possibly haven't been touched much at all since 65 years ago when it first opened. I also noticed that there are certain requirements that they've tried to meet, and they're obvious because it's massive amounts of wiring hanging down from the ceiling as we've tried to create spaces that meet their technology needs today. I didn't find it easy to navigate the building at all. I felt horribly for the students that have mobility challenges because it cannot be easy to go from classroom to classroom there. It's not an energy-efficient building. It appears not to be at all. It's not flexible, and I don't believe it's big enough anymore for what we need to do at the high school level. And I will say, it's hot in parts of that building, at least a quarter of it, and I don't apologize for saying that because I don't think we ask very many professional office people to work in un-air-conditioned environments anymore today like we do our teachers at the high school and our students as well. And I really left the building feeling like it has lived its useful life. It has served us well, and now it's time for a new building. And I don't say that easily. I love old buildings. I live in a 100-year-old house, but there are some buildings that you just need to say, "We were glad we had the time here," and it's time to move on. Personally, I think we've got 50 acres that are a great location for a new high school. I commend you on having the vision for that because at some point in the very near future, this building needs to be replaced. And it seems to me that that is a perfect location, especially now that we have the Green Hill Road extension. It's easy to get to for almost all parts of the town, and I think collaboration with you and I would be a great thing. I work for Western Home Communities. We are in a really terrible healthcare worker shortage along with every other healthcare provider here. We really want the high school to have spaces where a consortium of healthcare providers can come in and help train our next generation of workers that will stay in Cedar Falls and work and help take care of all of us. I know it's a lot of money. I'm willing to pay the extra $20 to $25 a month. I hope a lot of citizens in Cedar Falls are, and I just urge you to support the resolution and put it to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go?
No. Yes, I would just say again, thank you for both of our speakers this evening, and certainly, I think it's important to note, as one of our speakers talked about, that we have a large enrollment growth that we faced over the last several years. When you look over the last decade, we've grown 20% as a school district, and that is students that are attending our community school district, that are resident students. We do have open enrollment students because we are a district of choice. And again, a lot of families want students to attend our school district. And what we have come to find out through the discussions we had when we expanded the elementary work, we have roughly 93%, I believe, of our open enrollment students meet what is called the good cause requirement, so they have established residency. They're continuous in nature, and then they continue to come to our school district as students because they've been established as a resident student. We're excited by that, but we also know to invest in our school districts is important as we look at continuing to be a school of choice, to make sure that we're continuing to provide the high quality of educational services that we know we need to provide in Facilities Matter. And that's important, as we talked about multiple times here at the board table. You know, our schematics that we've shown, I think, now over six to seven times in this chamber, at these meetings, as well as probably close to now 20 to 25 community meetings, show the footprint of what the building could look like, what the square footage allotment could look like, what the layout of the land could look like, and certainly what the demands and needs are educationally, short term and long term. And I think it's important to note that as we understand the whole large picture, this is an investment that we're trying to review and look at for the next 50 to 70 years. We don't want an investment that's going to be a short term into a structure or a building that's landlocked, very expensive to renovate, and apples-to-apples would be about 118% of the overall cost of trying to remodel and add to that space at the current high school site versus building new. So economically, feasibly, educationally, economically, for development purposes, doesn't make sense.
Andy, may I ask you a question during communication also?
Yeah, please.
I've been approached by a couple of community members, and they've had some concerns that we, as a board, may have some conflicts of interest. Would you address that, please, publicly?
Yeah, I did not do a great job last time when that was brought up, and I apologize. You know, I think there was one comment two weeks ago that talked about, you know, there's conflicts of interest. We've reviewed everything with our attorneys. There's not. You know, one of the conflicts that is noted, or potential conflicts that people note, is with our architectural firm. We've been working with Envision Architectural Firm for the last 40 years. That predates anybody that currently works at Envision. It predates anybody that's currently on our board. It's a firm that I think we take a lot of pride in. It's a local firm that we work with closely, as is Structure, who does our elementary work. And those have been longstanding relationships because we want to spend dollars locally, and we do that with a lot of mindfulness and forethought to make sure that those dollars are spent locally. I think there's another comment at least two weeks ago about purchasing of land, and that's, or land that a board member might own. And I think that goes back to about 70 to 75 years ago in a family that purchased that land as a farm. And my assumption would be that they did not know that we would be here at this time, 70 years later, based on a purchase that was made that length ago to have a farmstead and farmland on the western side of the community. So again, we've researched all this. We've worked hard with our attorneys. There's not any conflict.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing that.
Please.
Moving on now, again, to communications. Marika Yang. Marika is our student representative for the high school.
Hi, everybody. So at the high school, we just successfully held the annual Do Better, Be Better 5K Color Run at Prairie Lakes Trails this past weekend, which was a really great success. It had a great turnout with about 150 run walkers. And then Women's Golf won their first Metro Meet last Wednesday at Irvine Memorial Golf Course in Waterloo. And also, since the last time I've been here, Rocket Club won the top high school award, the Judges' Choice Award at NASA Student Launch in Huntsville, Alabama on April 6th, and also won the Rocket Fair Award for Best Presentation. And then today, at the high school, Members in Violence Prevention, or MVP leaders, led ninth graders from Peaton Homes around the high school and gave them a glimpse of what high school life will be like when they come next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Marika?
One of seven high school teams at the national, with the Rocket Club?
Yes, we were one of seven high school teams.
Really impressive. And those are selected by NASA, so it's a very rare invitation, but also with very elite company, and we took away the top prize, which was really impressive.
It was a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Marika, what's the countdown? Janelle, the newsletter.
Yeah, good evening. We have lots of great things to cover tonight, looking across the district. The first one we're going to talk about is our Gold Star Teacher in Cedar Falls Schools. Kristin Schrock was named a Gold Star Teacher. She's a fourth grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary. And one of the highlights of my job is getting to be a part of these surprises because these teachers are literally caught completely off-guard to know that they're receiving this award. There's Kristin. Her husband and children came. That's the McElroy Trust staff. They're on the right, surprising her. This is then Ralph Bryant, her team at Lincoln, and then her mom and sisters came as well for the surprise. So congratulations to Kristin. There'll be the big celebration at the Gallagher Blue Door for the Gold Star Teacher Ceremony in May. Real quick, wanted to mention, upcoming this weekend is the First World Championships in Detroit, and our Team 525, the Sword Dogs, qualified for that. So they'll be going to Detroit for the World Championships. This past couple of months, as they've had these events, they've actually received lots of awards. They won the Northern Lights Regional. They also won the Iowa Regional event. And then they also won the Autonomous Award at the Northern Lights Regional. And one of their mentors received the Woody Flowers finalist award, and they're one of only two teams in the entire world to have six mentors who have received that award. And I think that speaks a lot to the commitment of those volunteers, year after year, towards the robotics team and the success that they have. So they'll be competing this weekend, and you can find a lot more information online as they compete and even watch some of the competitions. So we wish them the best of luck this upcoming weekend. Also wanted to mention that the U.S. Presidential Scholars have announced the semifinalists. And out of nine semifinalists in the state of Iowa, we have one at Cedar Falls High School. So Astoria Chow is one of those semifinalists, and they'll be announcing those award winners in early May. Real quick, late last week, they announced all of the Drake qualifiers for the Cedar Falls Boys and Girls Events. Just wanted to really quick review each of those, starting this Thursday with many of the field events. And then on to Friday, a lot of the individual events, as well as the relay teams, although not all the individual students are named here. We definitely wanted to just give the dates and times. A lot of that you can watch online, I believe, as well. So we wish all of our teams good luck at the Drake relays this weekend. We had a Tools for Schools winner this month. Mr. Wagner and Mrs. Pease, both at Hanson, wrote a grant for SAM Labs, which is for coding for Hanson's Makerspace, and it's made possible with Kimball &amp; Beecher Family Dentistry, UICCU, and KWL sponsor that award. They choose from those that have been, wrote those grants. So congratulations to those teachers and the students at Hanson. There was 50 girls from Holmes Junior High that attended an event at Iowa State. They actually, it was 50 ninth-grade girls within physical science, and they attended the Taking the Road Less Traveled STEM Career Conference. They went with Amanda Johnson and Jim Duff, their instructors. They were able to hear speakers, do some hands-on science activities, and then even had lunch with some Iowa State College students that are majoring in those STEM fields. Also wanted to mention, the high school Active Minds Group participated in the Out of Darkness Walk at U&amp;I to support suicide prevention. This is actually a new student group at the high school, Active Minds, and it's actually a national nonprofit organization that they've now started a chapter of at the high school. U&amp;I has a chapter as well, and it's really focused on mental health and kind of taking the stigma away from that. So this group was also part of the event that we had at the high school early in April, and they'll be having more information, they'll be sharing as they get going. We had students from Peaton Homes attend a conference at U&amp;I called "The Power of Yet." It was a middle school leadership conference. And also wanted to mention, we did a taping of Parent University episode here at Channel 15. It's now running on Channel 15 and also on the district YouTube channel, and it's really focused on the high school needs, the process, the planning that's gone into it, and then kind of what the future looks like for that. So we definitely encourage people to watch Channel 15 for those episodes, or you can watch online. Now also, this student art exhibit is up at the Hearst Center. It runs through May 12th, and this is the exhibit that features works from students K-12, chosen by their art teachers. So you can definitely stop by the Hearst Center and see that exhibit. And I have kind of exciting news, something I've been, we've been working towards as a district. We'd finally have what will be considered our Tiger Pride Magazine that will be coming out in mailboxes very soon. This is something a lot of districts do as far as publications they mail to residents in their districts to share information that is happening in the school district. It's kind of hard to reach the masses, so to speak, but we feel like this is a really great way for us to share the things happening as well as opportunity to get to know some students and staff and all the great work that's happening. So this will be our premier edition, and we'll be doing it twice a year moving forward. But everyone can be looking for that in their mailboxes soon. And there's all our social media. We definitely would love for you to connect with us. Any questions?
One real quick question. Will you load the Tiger Pride Magazine as a PDF on your website?
Yes. Yep. I was going to wait till it was in mailboxes out there.
Okay.
Didn't want to take the surprise away. It will be, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Janelle. Okay, moving on. To the secretary's financial report.
Okay, good evening. This evening, we're going to be reviewing February and March financials. So if you could pull up the PowerPoint for me, please. For our February financials, you'll see for General Fund, we had revenues of 3.9 million. We had expenditures of 4.2 million, leaving a balance of 4.9 million. You'll see that is a little bit, compared to last year, we are under that balance of $6 million. Next.
And that's because of just timing issues?
Well, it is timing issues, but it is also a good references to opening up the new building and the expenditures that we have paid for that building and this fiscal year that we are requesting for the SBRC to have that, the supplies and the additional items that we had to purchase for that building.
Okay.
So Management Fund, we had revenue of $4,300. We had expenditures of $7,000, and we had a balance of $785,000. For Capital Funds, again, this is, we're planning to close this out as soon as possible, but we have revenues of $568, which is obviously interest. We had expenditures of $158, which we have a remaining balance of $313,000. Next. Save, we had our revenues of $418,000. We had expenditures of $736,000. As a reminder, we do have a transfer out to our Fund 40 of $218,000 per month, which leaves a remaining balance of $7, excuse me, $7,794,000. Reminder, there is a restricted balance of $995,000, so we actually have unrestricted funds of $6.79 million. Which is our PEPAL, and we had revenues of $26,000, expenditures of $178,000, for a total of $3.3 million. For our debt service, we had revenues of $16,000. We had that transfer in from our save of $218,000. Expenditures were zero. Those expenditures are twice a year, and we had a total of $2.6 million. For our student activity, we had revenues of $80,000. Our expenditures were $92,000, and a total of $531,000. For our trust and agency funds, we had revenues of $27,000, expenditures of $10,000, and a total of $223, excuse me, $222,000. And our food nutrition revenue was $281,000. Expenditures were $219,000, with a remaining balance of $741,000. Our high school coffee shop, we had revenues of $949,000, or excuse me, $949. They'd like the thousand. Expenditures of $560, with a total balance of $5,188. And then we have our River Hills Consortium, which are revenues of $199,000, expenditures of $13,000, for a total available balance of $185,000. And just a reminder that these are flow-through dollars that we do provide to Central Rivers AEA. Any questions on February?
Questions for February?
Nope. If we could pull up March, then? So again, we'll go rather quickly unless there's some questions. For our General Fund, we had revenues of 4.1 million. We had expenditures of 4.4, for a total balance of 4.6. You'll see that that is creeping up a little bit in the sense of we're gaining on that last year's balance. So it is declining in the sense of we're catching where we were last year. For Management Fund, we had $12,000 in revenue. Expenditures was $8,000, for a total of $790,000. For Capital Projects, we had a revenue of $619,000, expenditures of nothing, and we have a total balance of $314,000. For our Save, we have $418,000. Again, expenditures were $402,000, with that transfer out, monthly transfer out of $218,000, for a total balance of $7.5 million. And again, that $995,000 is restricted. For our PEPAL, we have $70,000 for revenues. Expenditures is $21,000, for a total fund of balance of $3.3. For our debt service, revenue of $47,000, the transfer in of $218,000. There were no expenditures this month, again, and a balance of $2.9. For our student activity, we had revenues of $74,000, expenditures of $64,000, for a total balance of $541,000. For our trust and agency, for our revenues was $17,000. Our expenditures were negative because of the fact that there was transfers that we needed to have completed, and so we had a total balance of $267,000. For our food service, Enterprise Fund, revenues of $191,000, expenditures of $188,000, for a total ending balance of $744,000. For our coffee shop, we had revenues of $1,461, expenditures of $193, for a total balance of $6,456. And again, for our River Hills Consortium, we had revenues of $710,000, expenditures of $185,000, for a remaining balance of $710,000. Are there any questions for March?
So just since it's going to be very strange to have a negative expenditure, which you could do that on every single category?
I would agree.
But can you, can you say again, are you, because everything's on a cash basis or accrual basis? Cash basis, right?
Yeah.
So is, did, go ahead.
No, the reason for that expenditure was it was inadvertently paid on the incorrect fund. So that transfer
Brought it back into the correct fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes. So it does show a negative in that account, but actually it was into another account, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yep. We're not earning money.
Any other questions? If not, we will put February, March's secretary's financial report on file for audit. Thank you, Janelle.
Yep.
Moving on now to item G on the agenda, the bond petition acceptance.
We are excited to have Mr. Jim Moody this evening to present to the school board the information from the bond petition and the acceptance of that bond petition.
Thank you. My name is Jim Moody. First, from some of the great things we've heard tonight, I would like to thank the board, Dr. Petit, Mr. Conrad, Ms. Ziegler, for keeping our students in the forefront and pushing for achievement all throughout our district. When we started this process several years ago, I didn't have a student in high school. I do today. Through conversations with people, I hear comments about the student, or the building doesn't make the student. Going to argue with that a little bit. My student is very science-driven, very science-heavy. Going to other facilities and seeing these other students throughout the state that he's competing with, our facility is having him at a fault because we do not have the same facilities as other students throughout the state. The opportunity for us as a community and as a district to do nothing is gone. We have to do something. Our site is insufficient. You know, I hear comments about the location, and why did we buy there? Well, as history has shown with our school district, you guys have always been fiscally responsible. If you look back at our previous projects, they've always come in at or below budget. If you look at our timeframes, they've come in on time. We've always represented the city and the taxpayers of this city well. When I hear comments about, "Why don't we have a site plan?" Or, "Why don't we have a building plan of this new $69.9 million building?" Because that costs dollars to generate those. Tens of thousands of hundreds of thousands of dollars to generate those plans, being responsible. So when I look at that and I talk to people about the site, we paid, I believe it was $1.24 million for that site, for that location. I hear about the other piece of land that the hospital bought. Doing a little bit of research, that sold for $4.3 million. I hear about the hospital. The value of that location is over $14 million, and then we still have a site that's too small, a building that we have to start over with. Then I hear about College Square, another site that is too small by today's educational standards and valued at over $7.5 million. The location that was chosen was being fiscally responsible. So, and to say we're fiscally responsible, but we don't like the location, you can't have both. That's not an option. Another part that a lot of people don't realize with the location Another part that a lot of people don't realize with the location and the dollars that were invested in that, was a large portion of those dollars that was paid for that goes to future improvement of the ground. So again, another opportunity for us to be responsible with taxpayers' dollars. The opportunity to do nothing is gone. You know, we hear, well, why don't we renovate? Okay, we can renovate. It's 118% the cost of what we're proposing in a new building, and it's not a long-term solution. That's not responsible. So what I'd like to present to you is a petition that has 763 signatures of it, asking you to ask the question of the citizens of Cedar Falls to hold a bond for a new high school. Any comments or questions from you guys?
We appreciate your work and certainly your diligence and passion for improving the lives of our students and our community.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Thank you.
Could these two need to know?
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to item H on the agenda, the resolution ordering a special election on the issuance of the $69.9 million general obligation school bonds to, school bonds, and to fill a school board vacancy.
So there's two parts to this resolution, and I didn't put together a presentation or a PowerPoint slide. We've shown basically all that we can show to the school board or community through multiple presentations, through multiple videos here. There's two parts to this resolution. The first part is the bond. Our community has said, we want to be able to have a bond referendum for a new high school building, and that is something we want to place on the ballot. We have said multiple times, we want to make sure that we show that we are, A, doing something that's educationally sound, the best practices to prepare our kids and put them in a position for success. Two, we want to make sure that we have a building that's going to help drive economic development, growth, something that we know is extremely important as we look at the future of our community and where we know we're going to continue to move as a district. And then the third, and I think it's an important driver, we want something that's going to continue to provide that safe environment for all of our kids. We've known and have heard from multiple groups, through surveying, through all of the public presentations we've done, we want an environment that's safe for our students, safe for our staff, inviting for our community, and provides the greatest efficiencies we possibly can have. So there's two parts to the bond referendum calling. Number one is to ask for a bond referendum, calling for $69.9 million of general obligation bonds. We know this high school, as we've looked at comparisons, is much more expensive than that. When you look at the Waki New High School of $117 million, the new Ames High School of $122 million, our high school is, it's very easy to benchmark as far as what size and what is the regional cost and the Iowa cost and the cost across, and we shared all those things for multiple different meetings, that we know that we can come very close to what those estimates are, based on having the right-sized ability and to fit the educational needs, the economic needs and the growth needs as a community. We also know, that means that part of the funding's going to come from the school system through the other sources of funding, through the one-cent penny sales tax as we look to the future, to be able to make sure that we are fiscally responsible and prudent as we look as a school district into the future and invest wisely. The other parts, and the second part of that bond question is to ensure that, A, the $69.9 million is secured and approved. The second part is to make sure that we are saying that the amount of levy rate matches the $69.9 million, and it's very specific. You can't use that $69.9 million for anything else except to construct, build, and to furnish and equip a new high school building. So the second part says that we will ask for our levy rate to increase to help offset the $69.9 million fund. As we've talked about here multiple different times, we anticipate that that would be about $10.77 for a home in Cedar Falls per month for a $100,000 assessed home. As we went and did a lot of research, did a lot of surveying of our community, we knew that that was a threshold that felt very comfortable for a lot of our community members as they looked at the investment into education, investment long-term over the next 70 years as far as the infrastructure needs. The second part of this resolution, as Joyce read it, is to fill the seat vacated by Eric Giddens, elected in the special senate seat. We know we have to appoint somebody per Iowa code, but at the next election called for by the school board, that is going to be when that seat will be filled permanently until the end of his term, which would be November of 2021. So it calls, A, for the general obligation bond issuance, but number two, to fill the seat of Eric Giddens through the remainder of his term through November of 2021.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion regarding the resolution?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Directors adopt a resolution ordering a special election on the issuance of $69.9 million of general obligation school bonds and to fill a vacancy as presented.
Thank you, Susie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Orvis. Any questions or comments?
Is this an appropriate time to maybe address the status of SAVE currently in the legislature?
Yes, I think that's very appropriate, and we are excited that SAVE came out of the Ways and Means Committee, 16 to 1 of the senate. That is gonna go before the full senate vote this week. I have not checked to see if it is going to, if it happened today or not, I just have not had a chance to do that. But we know that that has now bipartisan support, it's going to move forward and will come out of this legislative session. It'll move very quickly, in fact, with the conversations we've had. We know that the difference from the House version to the senate version is the holdback for property tax relief of 30%, that I think the House version was 15%. That is still after the 2% annual inflationary rise of the one-cent sales tax amount. So over the course of the next, well, 21 years, from 2029 to 2050, the SAVE dollars to school districts for infrastructure actually goes up about 47%. So it almost doubles within that timeframe. So we are very supportive of the senate version and the holdback of the 30% for property tax relief. As we know, we had to take a very flat look at the SAVE dollars going towards the offset of this high school project, and you had to take a snapshot of your current enrollment at the current revenue, and we know that's only going to increase and grow. And one of the other requirements, as Janelle mentioned within our financials, you have to have a reserve amount, and 20% of those revenues go into that reserve amount as well that you have to hold back. So very comfortable, we're excited about the SAVE moving. We know that's gonna be, again, a good investment for districts across the state of Iowa, but certainly locally, going to offset the overall ask that we have our community vote on. Because Ames recently, for their new high school, just passed a $110 million bond referendum, and Waki just passed a $117 million bond referendum for the very same projects, and we're asking for $69.9 for something that's going to allow us to really have those facilities for the next 50 to 70 years.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Yes, starting with Joyce Coyle?
Yes.
Jeff Hessman?
Yes.
Susie Heinz?
Yes.
Jenny Lieber?
Yes.
Jeff Orvis?
Yes.
Sasha Walpert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're very excited for that.
Thank you. Moving on now to item I on the agenda, informational report on CAPS. Mr. Conrad, do you want to do the introduction? When they leave it open on the agenda, then I get to choose.
I don't, I don't think Ethan needs any introduction anywhere. He usually is pretty good about introducing himself even to people he's never met before, so. But I would like to introduce Ethan Weakman. He is our associate principal to high school this year, but also is actively involved with CAPS. Next year, he will be transitioning back to CAPS full-time to be our CAPS director, and so we're excited about that. He's been still the leadership in CAPS this year, even though he's taken on another role at the high school. So Ethan, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I'm sure it'll be fantastic.
Don't oversell it. Do I look at that, or can that go up there? There it is. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. I want to start off with our model, preparing students for their purpose, and there's two parts to that. The preparation piece is the professional skills training that we do in the CAPS program to ensure our students' success in any endeavor that they choose, and then, of course, there's the purpose. We take each student, we try to figure out, what are they, what are they skilled at? What are they passionate about? And can they get paid for it? So we try to wrap that around in their exploration piece, and we figure if we can do those things, they're gonna live a pretty rewarding life. I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to talk to you today about all the wonderful things that are going on in CAPS and the impact that it's having on the stakeholders and the communities that are engaging with it. Speaking of that impact, I've been fortunate to get into a few conversations these last couple of weeks of different stakeholders, different people that are engaging with the CAPS program and the impact on them. I put a few quotes from them up there, and the first one starts off, says, "I have had many undergrad and graduate interns, and McKenna's work is the best I've seen." That's from a CAPS client that's in St. Louis. "One of our goals in the education program is to start getting more projects." And we were able, this client reached out to us, heard about us being in the CAPS network, heard about our education program and how well they're doing, and wanted to partner with us. So McKenna took on that project, works remotely, zooms in, figures out, you know, working through that. If you talk to her, she says, "It's a little weird at first, but it's pretty effective," and obviously she's doing a very good job. Second quote is, "She comes home every day and talks with me for an hour about her CAPS experience." That's a CAPS med associate parent who stopped by my office the other day just to tell me that, and just wanted to say, "You can't believe the difference in her daughter since she's been in the CAPS program, specifically in the med program and the experiences that she's had. She feels like she has a path forward, she feels like she knows what she wants to do, and she's just very grateful for that." The third quote is, "What you guys teach me about making connections matters so much. With these connections, we are set to top $40,000 this coming summer." That's a CAPS associate that took the CAPS program, who was a young entrepreneur. He started his own business in lawn care, and he wanted to figure out more of the branding, the marketing, and the business aspects of that. Worked with our, the BCS building on U&amp;I and the great programming, the people there, really helped his company grow, so he's very appreciative. Three different examples, whether it's a parent, whether it's a client, or whether it's an associate, that have engaged in the program and finding great value in what's going on there.
And I think it's important just for language, and associate is one of our high school students, and I know board members know that, but it's important for our community to know that. So those are high school students, when we, when we talk to them about associates as being associates.
I'm glad you pointed that out. I've been trying to say student associates when I'm giving these speeches, but we're very specific on when we address them as associates and not as students, because that's a big part of our programming. So I try to err on the associate side, so thank you for bringing that up. Other things that are going on the program, it's been a busy year. We've had a lot of stuff going on, and we just heard from, I believe, Mrs. Bowman, talking about the medical field and the shortages that are there and the need for quality employees in that field. We were talking, as one of our big pieces in the CAPS program is we're going to expand, is we knew it was a student interest, it was a high student interest area, it's the medical and health services, but we also knew the community, it was a big interest area for our businesses to try to get good employees in that. So we wanted to get that started, and we were able to do so this year. We were lucky to find Dr. Alba Aguijón. She's had a plethora of medical experiences throughout her life, and she came aboard a part of our CAPS instructor and leadership, and she not only inherited a new strand, but she inherited our biggest strand right out of the shoots because of the interest in it. So she's done a really good job of providing different experiences. You can imagine the projects are a little bit different in the CAPS med, because if someone wants to be a surgeon, there's a lot of HIPAA things that go into them actually practicing that. So that's not, it's more based on experiences and trainings than necessarily a project, although we've had a few. You'll notice up there, one of the partners that we have is Mercy One, Waterloo and Cedar Falls, they've been outstanding to provide the experiences our associates need, really student associates need, to really dive into the medical fields. They've had some rotation experiences, and when you talk with our associates after that, that's really powerful for them to figure out what is a medical facility like and what different careers are there. The lifelight, as you see in that one picture, is always a fan favorite. They get to figure out what it's like to be a flight nurse, really interesting. They tell their story and why they do it and why they're passionate about it. Again, job shadows are big in the medical field, just kind of figuring out what exactly you want to do. The one in the middle there with the person laying down, that was partnering with Hawkeye Community College, allowed our student associates to come and be a part of their simulated car crash and to figure out what all first responders respond to that and how they operate together, so it was a great experience for them to engage. They have different lab tests that they do. They've got training such as HIPAA, BLS, CPR, which is more advanced CPR training than the layperson would take. Empathy training's big in the medical field, as you can imagine. And then we also had a vaping project. Well, I guess I'll adapt and overcome. Oh, we're going back. There we go. Vaping project for our junior highs, where they developed an informational video for our junior high students to understanding the harms of vaping and why that's not a good practice and something to engage in. So they, they're out there, they're out there in the community, and it's been a good addition to our program. Some of the events that we did throughout the year, just to give you an idea, we've been around the state, and we've been, we get more and more asked to present about the CAPS program. We went to the Northeast Iowa STEM Festival again this year. A big piece of what we do is we get our student associates out front and communicating and networking and working on those skills. So everywhere we go, we ask them to come with us and talk about the CAPS program. So there, we had some associates telling all the wonderful things that are going on and opportunities for young students if they want to get involved with the CAPS program. We're also fortunate to be a STEM Best recipient again this year, and we'll talk more about that here in a little bit. So they asked us to come down to the state Capitol for STEM Day, and that's us at the Rotunda. Again, we put our associates out front, they get to talk with the lawmakers about the CAPS program and tell them what's going on and why it's a good investment for that type of work-based learning. And the other piece that you see in there is, we're talking with Jeff Weld, local guy with U&amp;I, who's very well-connected in the STEM fields, and then our local politicians. Nice little photo of us looking at the Iowa Constitution, that was for them to be able to see that as well. Another thing about that STEM, again, we always talk about importance of networking. We had a young man go up and network with John Deere that led to a John Deere Early Talent Program, which then led him to a award, which then led him to a scholarship at Iowa State. So it's one of those neat stories where you never know where a conversation's gonna lead, and he was first one out there talking to people, getting business cards, letting them know who he is and what he was doing, and that's really led to something special for that young man. Future Ready Iowa was a big event that we had this year. Our CAPS leadership, specifically Nate Clayberg and I, were asked to help serve on that committee and design what that was gonna look like. Along with serving on that committee, we also served on panels, and Nate led a group afterwards, a session, a group session at the end of it. Again, our CAPS associates, we got them out front, greeting with people, kind of leading the way on where different people are supposed to go, getting their badges, and again, telling the CAPS story. U&amp;I, great partner of the program, asked us to be with them to present at the Board of Regents at Iowa State University. Just so happens, they said, "Hey, can we have an associate go with you?" Coincidentally, one of our first CAPS associates, Kabir, is currently at Iowa State University, and so I asked if he would like to come and help present at the board. He's got a great story about the Stepstool Project, he worked with Crichton, that led to an internship, which led to him remotely still working at Iowa State for them, and is also leading to future employment, which we'll be talking about at our innovation celebration. So he came up, told his story. That's President Winterstein, I'm hoping I'm saying that right. She was really impressed by him afterwards, so he got to go, she came over and introduced herself to him, and of course, he knew who she was, and they had a really great conversation about where he's at and where he's going, especially at Iowa State University. Connects the Yet, this is a program that, it's really a community-driven program, it's a partnership between CFU, Cedar Falls Schools, and the community to provide our free and reduced lunch populations, seven through 12, affordable internet access. We started that with you, CFU and Cedar Falls School, and then the CAPS program took on the capital campaign portion of that. And we're very thankful for our community members and our organizations and businesses that help support that program through their funding. We currently have 50 different families that are subscribing to that, and we're full, we have a waiting list. And so we're hoping to, as we move forward, that's a great problem to have, because we'll need to go back and work with our different businesses and organizations to accrue more funding, and hopefully we can get more than 50 next year. The plan is to start figuring out, what's our three-year plan with this program? Because there's a huge need, and there's, the couple of families that I've talked to are very grateful for this program. So another neat thing, that's the, another great community venture that the CAPS program was part of. Projects fuel our program in many of our strands, specifically the business strand and our manufacturing, engineering, technology strand. Variety of different projects that are going on. We have water quality testing through the Dry Run Creek with the city. We also have a project, an island park project, which was really neat, is figuring out, what are we gonna do with Island Park and some different ideas there. Community main- Community Main Street continues to be a big partner with us. Viking Pump has thrown some projects at us, CFU as well. We did a 3D model of what a new high school could look like as well, so that was an interesting project as they worked through with TechWorks as well because that's the smaller version. There's a larger version that TechWorks helped us design as well. So a lot of different projects, that's just scratching the surface, I just ran out of picture space. Education, I want to throw this out there, Megan Drozzy's doing an outstanding job of getting our students into the different buildings throughout the Cedar Valley and getting great experiences, K through seven. She has Ed One and also Ed Two, so she's seen a growth in her Ed Two program where they take a CAPS experience and the education, really like it and want to continue and go deeper into that experience. So Ed One has three placements that are three weeks long. And then Ed Two has only two placements, but they go deeper into five weeks, so they can do some more of that unit planning piece and more lessons there. And then Rozzy's the learning education company that they partner, McKenna partnered with, and that's the one in St. Louis. So they're trying to get more projects and grow that program. Design Sprints is getting quite the reputation with the CAPS program because one of the things that we got feedback early on was we wish we could get more immersed in CAPS program right away and really get that real-world feel. So we said, "Okay." After your first day of onboarding with your host site, we're gonna throw you into a three-day sprint and basically, we figure out a problem. And then after they get that problem, they go and start working with their teams and they've got a day to really work on their teams and then on the third day, they give a pitch. So it's a real problem, real deadlines, real clients. And so that one in the top, the problem that we chose this time was we've had a trash issue at the high school, specifically in the parking lot. It actually plugged the storm drains. There was so much trash in there and we had to pump that out this year. And caring about our environment, a lot of our associates felt called to this project and really worked hard on it. They gave presentation, we asked some district facilities people to come out to that and hear their presentations along with some people from the city. From that project, if you go out there now to the high school and you look at the storm drains, there are metal grates in front of there because that was one of the ideas that was brought up in the presentation and the district moved forward with implementing that. So that catches large trash items, so we're pretty proud of, again, having that impact and real problems with real results. The bottom one is from our spring semester and that one is community, Cedar Falls Community Main Street came to us and said, "We need to update our banners downtown." And so they said, "Hey, let's throw out the CAPS program." We threw all of our strands at it and they got that project. In the middle there, you're gonna see that's Mud Advertising's video room, I guess is what I would say, where they make commercials and stuff. So they partnered with us and they did a presentation. It's already a pretty intense experience for them because they don't get this type of programming necessarily. And then they're thrown in front of a panel and 70 of their peers, I believe Dr. Pat T. was there and Mr. Conrad, so pretty intense environment. Then you throw them up front and say, "You're gonna videotape you and we have this big, bright light on you and you can't really see." So they did an outstanding job. Main Street was overwhelmed. In fact, they said, "Our biggest issue is now is dwindling it down." That project's been added, we added as a project this semester and we have a young lady in our business strand right now working on it. We're hoping to develop that and hopefully, you'll see the fruits of that labor here sometime soon on Main Street. So again, real projects, real clients, real deadlines, right out of the shoots. Career conversations continue to be a big part of what we do. We talk about this graduation story as if a student's, you know, at a high school standing there and people going through and eating their cake and they ask the question, "So what are you gonna do now?" And we want them to be able, not only tell them where they're headed, but why and what's their purpose for it. So Nate Clayberg, our business developer and Chris Wood, our counselor at the high school, do an outstanding job with this and they meet with every one of our associates and work through of, "What do you want to do with your career? What type of training you're gonna need to get there and then what are your next steps?" So that's a pivotal piece of what we do as we talk about, you know, students trying to figure out what their passion is and what are they skilled at and whether they can make money. So big part of the program. Career interviews and tours is also, we believe in getting our associates out in the community, figure out what our business is doing, what opportunities are out there for them in the Cedar Valley, but then also get to explore different careers. The lady in the middle there, the associate, her name's Ellie, she, I had her come in because I heard about this experience and she got to scrub in with a doctor that was doing a double hernia operation with a robot. And so she, you know, she was telling me how this all worked and basically, I'm trying to paraphrase as best I can, but two wires go into the patient and while the doctor's over on the side and basically, like a video game, gets to see the cameras on the end of those wires, but is using a robot to guide those wires as those wires do the surgery. So it was a pretty powerful piece for her and she had a great experience. Volunteering becomes, is a big part of what we're doing. That becomes a bigger and bigger piece because we know servant leadership's important and there's a lot of needs in our, in the Cedar Valley. And so that's, we intentionally put that in our programming as some hours that they need to get out into volunteering and get out into our community. Partners in programming, Agile Scrum Training every year, Angie Stephan and we actually added Dave Stagie through Kuna Mutual, they're both scrum coaches or scrum masters. They help out with that Agile Scrum Training as we work with our project management. Interviewing and resume development, we have a lot of different people within our businesses and organizations come and help our associates with that. CF Tech coaches have helped with our education strand, so they've had some good experience with technology and how they can utilize that in the classroom. And then of course, U&amp;I, BCS Building, there's a lot of alphabet soup here. Business Community Services and then CBGI is one of the programs in there and that's the Center for Business Growth and Innovation. And then JPEC's upstairs, that's the John Papa John's Entrepreneurial Center. So those are, they do a lot of our onboarding programming and different programs are different projects. My apologies, I'm getting long, there's a lot of things going on. U&amp;I Partnership, I really want to highlight U&amp;I because we become more and more ingrained with the University of Northern Iowa and the opportunities they have. A big thing with the CAPS program is utilize each other's resources and help each other out. So they do a lot of the onboarding, you'll see the three ladies in the top there, they're working on skills and how to walk together and communicate, also some team building activities there with some hula hoops. But as you can see, Dr. Pat T., he was super excited. This year, we had the MOU signing at the BCS Building because our business strand moved into there as their new home and so that's where our business strand works now. And that's our second strand at U&amp;I with Schindler Education Center with Education and now our business strand's also housed at U&amp;I campus. The Cadaver Lab, again, we can't operate on real people, however, they have a cadaver lab at U&amp;I that we utilize and that's a big, great experience for our associates as well. And then on the bottom right there is the education strand at Schindler Education utilizing a lot of the different tools and resources in that building. And then on the top right is a company that started at JPEC through the CAPS program, that's old people brand, they're a t-shirt company and they actually have gone through all of it. They have a tax ID, they've worked on who gets what percentage of the company, who does what roles. I mean, it's a real business and they're working through that now and had a great experience with their JPEC program. Host site, can't say enough about our host sites. Again, we just talked about the two at U&amp;I, the BCS Building and then Schindler Education Center, but also want to thank Allen College for stepping up for our medical strand. That's where, we're on Allen College's campus, but we're all, we just added this semester, Mercy One Cedar Falls, so that's nice, Sartori Building, right across the street, so they get to go see that and they've been great partners. And again, we can't say enough about Viking Pump, the original host site. They were the ones that first took leap of faith and every year, they keep re-upping their commitment and going further, so they've been outstanding partners. This summer, we're not slowing down. We're very excited to announce, we're the first CAPS program in the nation to offer an actual CAPS experience this summer. And we're calling that CF CAPS Enterprises and Nate Clayberg's gonna head that. We were able to get a STEM Best Grant, that's why we're at the state Capitol, and to garner funds to start that. So we have at least 10 associates that are gonna be in that program and we know that's providing more opportunities, especially for AP-minded band, chorus, activities like that, that may not fit a CAPS experience in their regular schedule. So this summer program, we're really excited about. CAPS Network's excited for us, they're interested to see how it turns out. We're going to Summer Huddle again this year, that's the 24th through the 26th, that's where everybody in the CAPS network. It's an international program now, the first, our first program outside of the US in Mumbai just joined. And I think there's over 100 different programs in the United States right now. So we meet, talk about innovative education, how we can help each other get better. STEM Innovator is another grant that we were very excited about being awarded. That allows our CAPS instructors to go down to the University of Iowa and get training and programming and innovative education techniques through the STEM Innovator. So they'll be doing that July 15th through the 19th. So our instructors are extremely busy, they continue to work on trying to build those programs, all of that, plus they've gotta add, garner more projects and business relationships. Upcoming events, I swear this is my last one. Upcoming events is the Innovation Celebration of May 15th. If you haven't marked that on your calendars, please do. It is a super neat experience where you see the businesses, community, parents, student associates and school leadership all go and just celebrate this type of opportunities for our community. There's gonna be a showcase when you come in there, it's kind of the rotunda, the entryway of Central Rivers AEA, so we'll have tables, you can walk around, we'll have some appetizers, no meal this year. We wanted to shorten the program a little bit. So that'll be from 5:30 to 7:00. We have a student panel, short program, it's a great experience. We're also highlighting the workforce development piece with Kabir. He'll be there with Crichton and there's gonna be a signing ceremony because he's committing to a, I believe, two or three-year commitment to Crichton and with tuition reimbursement from Crichton. So they've negotiated what their contract's gonna be and Crichton's super excited. You keep talking to their president, Kevin, and he'll say, you know, "We're competing when we go to Iowa State for these engineer fairs and we're competing with John Deere on my left and Catapril on my right and we're the small company, it's hard to compete, but by engaging with the CAPS program, they can get into our culture, see who we are and we feel like that could be a great feeder for the program." So we're gonna highlight that. May 22nd is our orientation night, that is where we, the next crop of student associates that'll be in the program, we kind of give them an idea of what it's coming up and what it's gonna be like for the fall. Lastly, I just want to thank the school board for their, and our school leadership for their continued investment in the CAPS program. Without your vision, your leadership, we wouldn't be where we are today and more importantly, our students wouldn't have the opportunities that they have today. And it's truly an impactful program and it gets more and more impactful every year. So I just want to thank you very much for your time and commitment to the program. Annie said I had 20 minutes, how'd I do? Was I close? I practiced this like three times.
You were, you did great.
Yes, I was over, wasn't I?
No, you weren't over at all.
Any questions?
Ethan's never been under anything.
Ethan, I have a quick question because I had a suggestion after the Innovation Celebration last year. Is there an opportunity or a way to have our younger students either attend the Innovation Celebration or have those students that are setting up, you know, kind of have a miniature experience for even our upper, our upper junior high and our freshmen and sophomores so that they can see what CAPS is about through the students rather than just hear about it from counselors and parents and things like that? I don't know if there's any way to incorporate that other than just an invitation, but...
That's a great question. I would see the challenge that we'd have is our capacity's around 300 and we fill that capacity with the people that are involved in it. So I'm not sure we're gonna be, how much we'd be able to do it that way. However, we do have, we're working on ideas on how can we get those experiences at a younger age and especially in the junior highs that they can get into maybe our host sites and see what's going with CAPS. There's some career programming going on right now in the junior highs, it seems like that might be a good fit. That'll be something we'll be addressing over the summer.
Great. Great presentation, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Moving on now to item J, the appointment of board member.
Yes, so we just, a few minutes ago, prior to the CAPS presentation, talked about the resolution order in a special election as well as filling the vacancy on the board, vacated by Eric Giddens. So we know Iowa code changed in 2016 and talked about we shall appoint and it's something that we do until the next election. So with the next election being June 25th, we have a two-month appointment. It's been amazing, the number of people that I have talked to over the course of the last several months that have interest in a school board seat, potentially giving back to the community because they take great pride in the quality of education and want to be involved to continue to move us forward. So that's a great opportunity, but it also presents a challenge because if you appoint somebody for a two-month position, that has to be up for election on June 25th. Who do you choose? What is the process? My recommendation for the board, we have a former board member that is willing to serve, is not interested in rerunning for the board, so you don't have to try to select one person to come into a position that may cause somebody to view as favoritism or shifting the discussion towards one person because they get all the job training. Plus then, we have a person that understands the system. I think we have maybe two meetings that are on the books as scheduled between now and that election because we have one meeting as necessary after Memorial Weekend and then only one meeting in June scheduled. So it's a two-meeting filling of this position, so then the community can vote on on June 25th. My recommendation would be that we appoint Susan Lance. She has been the executive director for the school foundation. She's retiring from that position. She has served on the school board for multiple years. Anybody that knows Susan knows she's an ethical person, an ethical framework and certainly is willing to do whatever she can to help support the students in our school system over the short term, knowing that she does want to retire sometime in the future and has no interest in running for the open position after the two-month service.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education, per Iowa Code 279.6, appoint Susan Lance to fill the open director's seat of Eric Giddens until the next special or regular election.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Second, it's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
So how many people have expressed an interest in what would be the process if they want to run in the special election?
Yes, I have met with actually four people face-to-face regarding just the process to run, the petition process, getting your name on the ballot and in that kind of window. Then I have had probably another five informal conversations, either via email, phone conversations of people saying, "You know what? If you need somebody to be appointed, I'd very much be interested because I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make our system successful, kids in the system, but not necessarily interested in running." The process is now we, it's a little bit unique because of the special election window. There's gonna be a time where the, there is a window to fill out a petition and you have to have 50 signatures to have your name placed on the ballot. There's a backup timeframe from that. Those are due, I believe, maybe the beginning of June and I'm looking at Janelle because May 31st, thank you. And we'll have those in our office, you fill out the nominating forms, get the petition signatures, turn those into our office, we get them to the election office and then they create the official ballot. And then that ballot will be on June 25th with our general obligation bond referendum. Very excited. Again, there's people that are very passionate and again, our hair just as individuals on this board to do what they can to help support the district, all of our students, our staff and certainly our community as a whole.
Any other questions? And Janelle, will you put maybe a link for that process when that, when that gets flushed out?
We have a little work to do with the election office because they wanted to make sure that we had the final approval to move forward with that, but now the timeline starts because of the June 25th election and then we'll have the backup dates and all the information from that.
Perfect, thank you. And I'm sure the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier will do a wonderful job with the article. So that would be very helpful. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Moving on now to the proposed list of the 2019 graduates. Dr. Pat T.
Yeah, it's always really an exciting time as we approach graduation and within the board packet, per Iowa code, you will see the list of our graduates pending final approval and finishing all the requirements for graduation and we recommend approval of that list of graduates.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the list of 2019 graduates?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve awarding diplomas to the Cedar Falls High School class of 2019 contingent upon satisfactory completion of graduation requirements as attested to by the high school principal.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Moving on now to item L on the agenda, the approval of the 2019-2020 Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement. Dr. Talbot.[1774.87]
Thank you. Tentative agreement was reached on April 3rd, 2019 on a contract to cover a one-year period July 1, 2019 through June 30th of 2020. This tentative agreement has been ratified by Teamsters members. Base wage increase to be 40 cents per hour for all classifications. The wage increase for returning employees, 40 cents per hour for all classifications. The total dollar increase in base wages, wages, FICA and IPIs is 2.94 percent. We recommend acceptance of this tentative agreement.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Talbot? Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Teamster Collective Bargaining Contract as presented.
Thank you, Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. Again, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to item M, approval of the 2019-2020 CFEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. Dr. Talbot.
Tentative agreement was reached on April 9th, 2019 on a contract to cover a one-year period July 1, 2019 through June 30th of 2020. This tentative agreement has been ratified by CFEA members. Economic items, $410 increase to the 2018-19 BA Step 1 Base Wage Generator on the Basic Salary Schedule. Step advancement, lane changes for employees who meet the requirements. Language items, all teachers in good standing to advance one step on the salary schedule. Credit for teaching and/or applicable work experience for placement on the salary schedule upon initial employment to increase from 15 to 20 years. Add Rocket Club and e-sports to the extra curricular athletics activities schedule. The base wage increase and step advancement, including FICA and IPIs, is 2.86 percent. We recommend acceptance of this tentative agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Cedar Falls Education Association Collective Bargaining Contract as presented.
Thank you, Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Suzie. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I'd be remiss in not thanking Adrian, Pam, Dan, and Janelle for their leadership along with Suzie. Suzie and I served as board representatives on the bargaining team. I also want to thank CFEA and their leadership group that joined us. We had great conversation. It's a very respectful process and I really thank Adrian for that and really Jackie, too. We are able to talk about some difficult subjects and always feel free, always felt that when we, at the end of the day, when we left the table, you know, we could shake hands, we were smiling and really felt good about the, our end result. So, I think that just, that just says a lot for our process. So, thank you. All right, moving on then to item N, the issuance of contracts and letters of assignment.
What we are requesting of the board is the allowance of issuing contracts and letter of assignments for our employees for the 2019-20 school year. As you may recall, this was a new item last year that was recommended by the Department of Ed and the auditor, state auditor's office to be included as an annual request. Typically, once the board had approved the salary packages, the district would process those contracts and letters of assignment. But again, the DE and the auditor's office is recommending this one additional step prior to processing.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts and letters of agreement?
The Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education authorizes the board secretary to issue individual contracts or letters of assignment for 2019-2020 school year employees, including use of the board president's signature stamp as necessary.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Sasha. Any questions or comments?
These are just for the agreements that we have already finalized and approved for the board, or by the board. So, it's for those letters of assignments and contracts to be released.
And I take it this does not have any impact on the 279 code as far as continuing contracts that whether or not we didn't get this paper back, we would still employ this person?
Correct. Yep, yep. This is kind of now just a step in the process to allow us to move forward to issue the contracts. And we know with the Iowa code requirements and other specifics that we have in place, this is really just one more step to make sure that the auditor and our attorneys are okay with processing.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to item O, the approval of staff laptop replacement bid per the 10-year PEPAL plan, physical plant and equipment levy.
Okay, this is me again. If you could pull up the PowerPoint for me. As a reminder, our staff laptop replacement bid is for 10-year PEPAL plan. If we can go to the next screen, please. You will see that normally our replacement is every three years. The Cedar Falls district is within the 10, excuse me, four years currently. So, we are moving forward with our staff laptop replacement. We are looking at 620 laptops for the use of all required staff and what that includes is the operation system and obviously an extended warranty. We did provide this documentation to six vendors. We did receive two bids back, as you can see on the screen. The four obviously did not bid, but we did receive from CDW as well as Dell Marketing and the recommendation is Dell Marketing from Round Rock, Texas of $569,104.20 minus the trade-in value of approximately 1,000 units for approximately $57,000, which would make this about $512,000, which is under budget accordingly of our budget plan of $540,000.
Thank you. Do I have any, do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the staff laptop replacement purchase from Dell Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas in the amount of $569,044.20 minus approximately $57,000 for trade-in allowance for an approximate total of $512,104.20 as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Suzie. Any questions or comments?
I recently was working with a staff member with her computer and I realized that it is definitely time for replacement for some of these machines. So, I'm sure that they'll be grateful to have something with a little more current operating system and as someone who works on these things on a regular basis, it's tough when you're working with some pretty old technology to be able to keep up with what's going on right now.
We do our best to try to make sure that they are current every four years and some of that's, you know, budgetary constraints, but it's always exciting when we have this large of a rollout for all of our staff and a lot of people get excited as we look at, again, new software, some new hardware and some new opportunities. So, every four years, this is always a large process, an exciting process. And you think about the number of staff that we have and the number of laptops we need, it's certainly a daunting challenge in a short amount of time because we certainly try to get those out to staff members, certainly prior to the end of school year or during the summer, so they can hit the ground running when they come back in August.
Thank you. Any other...
Could you just remind the funds that this money comes out of? What is the...
Great question and this is part of our 10-year physical plant and equipment levy. So, we have a 10-year plan. Part of that plan is ongoing updating of our student Chromebooks and devices every year. We do that on a rotational basis, but then every four years, we have an update for our staff computers. So, we budget accordingly. We have an inflationary factor involved with that, not knowing what may happen or may look like four years from now when we upgrade these. So, I think at that time, we have budgeted about $570,000 roughly at that timeframe. We know we're going to continue to increase in enrollment in staff and certainly we are very prudent with our planning and what that looks like over the course of the next 10 years.
Thank you.
So, just to be clear, since you mentioned budgets, so we, our target for this was 540?
Correct.
And we came in at about 512, kind of based on the credits that they give us for the old ones?
Correct.
Okay, so we're significantly under...
Under budget. Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to item P, the superintendent's report.
Couple of different items. Commencement, May 26, 2019. We have one board member that I know will be on the stage handing diplomas. Is there another board member for that weekend that would be interested in that?
I will do it.
Fantastic, thank you. That's always a really enjoyable afternoon and certainly rewarding as you have the opportunity to shake hands of our graduates as they move on to the next phases of their career and life. Service recognition is Tuesday, May 21st, 4:15 at Pheasant Ridge. And then, our board retreat will be June 12th, 9:30 a.m. All ahead.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Pat T.? Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. Item R on the agenda is a motion for closed session.
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education enter in closed session to discuss the purchase or sale of a particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. The minutes and the audio recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed under 2011 Iowa Code 21.51J.
We're going to go into closed session now and we'll move into another room, oh, excuse me. So, we're going to take a vote here and then we'll come back out and we'll adjourn the meeting. There will be no action taken. Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
This is actually a roll call.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Lieber?
Yes.
Mr. Orvis?
Yes.
Ms. Walpert?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now move to closed session.